Okay, we're gonna call the regular city council meeting to order Monday, March 14th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
David Paradise.
Nicole Andrioff.
Kirby Moynah.
Tom Marslick.
Sam Solars.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Joe Saffin.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Michael Sommer.
invocation? Good, good.
I was reading this morning in the Book of First Kings about King Solomon. You're probably familiar with him, but listen to this question that God asked him. God said, "Ask for whatever you want me to give you." Can you imagine God coming and asking you that? And Solomon could've asked for anything. He could've asked for destruction for all of his enemies. He could've asked for wealth and riches, but he asked God for wisdom. He asked for discerning heart to lead the people. And that's gonna be my prayer for all of you tonight and every leader that's in this room, representing this room, because God is happy to give wisdom. And when Solomon requested that, not only did God give him the wisdom, more wisdom than anybody ever had in the past and ever will have in the future, but he also gave him wealth and riches and honor and so much more. And we need God's wisdom to lead in the positions that you're all in. So let's pray. Kevin, how your word says that wisdom begins with fear of the Lord. So we acknowledge you, Lord, as the one true God, the author of wisdom, the source of wisdom, the source of truth, the source of hope, the source of justice, the source of love. Lord, we ask that you would lead and guide this council tonight as they meet, go through the decisions concerning our community. Let them make decisions using your wisdom. Cause their agenda to align with your agenda and your perfect plan. I ask that you would enable them and everybody in this room, Lord, to speak when it's time to speak and to listen when it's time to listen. And we need your help with that. Help them to make wise decisions, Lord. I ask that you would bless this council and all the leaders in our city that are called to lead and serve in our community. We commit this meeting to and we commit this city to you in Jesus' name.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on to the approval of the agenda. I actually would like to make one change and move Resolution 2022-11 under New Business, uh, letter E.
Okay. So off the consent agenda.
Yep.
So, letter E?
Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda with the requested change.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the agenda? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Vote yes. Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Uh, Wright County Sheriff's?
I'm Deputy Moynah with the Wright County Sheriff's Office. For the month of February, nothing too new to report. We had 169 calls for service. I just wanna reiterate from what I said the last time I was here, this general safety advice, general safety tips. You know, to protect yourself and your property, lock your car doors. When you go inside for the night, if you do wanna lock your car doors, grab that garage door opener as well. So leave or take any valuables out of your, your car as you go inside. Stuff like that, general safety tips. Otherwise, that's all I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council?
We had a city council meeting, special council meeting, fire department meeting, Montrose Days Committee meeting, and the Montrose Days Fish Fry.
Um, council, special council meeting, Montrose Days meeting, and Fish Fry.
Had the council meeting, special council meeting, the engineers meeting, private meeting with residents at City Hall, personnel meeting, and the meeting with the auditor.
Uh, city council meeting, Wright County Board of Commissioners, two meetings, Personnel Committee, two meetings, Montrose, Waverly Chamber of Commerce, uh, City Council Special Meeting, Engineering Meeting, and a Business Opportunity Meeting.
Uh, council meeting, special council, and Montrose Days Fish Fry.
Fire Department?
All I have is the activity report, nothing special.
Are there any questions for Kevin? Personnel?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item under Personnel this evening is the APSME, the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, a memorandum of agreement for a City Clerk, Treasurer, and Public Works Director's salary. The positions currently have the same point values assigned to them, and so they have the same wage scale. I have been working with APSME about the past month to get the wages set and get this MOA drafted, and staff recommends the approval of the MOA and wages.
I'll make a motion to approve the APSME MOA.
I will second.
Further discussion? Vote yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Uh, the second item on the agenda is the Public Works Director Job Description. During several discussions with the hopefully incoming Public Works Director, he made it known that the position of Deputy Clerk, which was previously utility billing, should not report to Public Works Directors since they're part of the administrative staff and should report to the City Clerk, Treasurer, and City Administrator only. Staff is requesting this change be approved for the Public Works Job Descrip- Job Description.
I think it makes sense to make the change. So I will make a motion to approve the updated job description for Public Works Director.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0.
The last thing under Personnel this evening, included in your packet for review, was a short memo regarding staff's internal candidate to replace the Public Works Director. The position was offered to all current staff for a period of five business days to decide if they wanted to be interviewed by the Personnel and Employee Development Committee, which was composed of the City Administrator, Mayor Moynah, and Council Member Marslick. Only one staff member is currently qualified and interested in the position, and that staff member is Dan Reamer. Dan Reamer has been with the city for 20 years and currently holds a B wastewater license and a C water license and is otherwise qualified. Two different interviews were conducted by the Personnel and Employee Development Committee, and it was decided the recommendation would be to appoint Mr. Dan Reamer as the Public Works Director at this time. The negotiated wage the Personnel and Employee Development Committee is recommending at this time is $81,000 as a starting wage. If Mr. Reamer is appointed this evening, an Operator One position will be available, and we will be offering the position to all current employees to see if they would like to interview for that position. We will then either post outside the organization for an Operator One or a Maintenance Worker One position, depending on whether or not the current staff wanna try for the open position as the Operator One, which would then open up a Maintenance Worker One position.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dan Reamer as our new Public Works Director.
I will second. Discussion?
What are the tiers of the licenses? So you got a B wastewater and a C water.
I know Dan's a little more familiar with the tiers than I am. I know you can go all the way up to an A. Our plant for wastewater is a B plant.
Okay.
You usually start at a D, and then you gotta wait two years test, then you can jump to a C, and I think it might be two or three years, and then you can jump to a B. Back before Waverly came online, this, this town was a D wastewater plant, and then when they upgraded, they jumped to a B facility. So, and then our water plant's a D right now. In the future, the filtration plant, we all know is coming, will probably require a higher license, but in each water and sewer goes D, C, B, A.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think it's a good move. It, it shows the employees that we're willing to promote from within instead of going outside. And when you always go outside for your hires instead of promoting from within, in my opinion, it puts a ceiling on where your employees feel that they can go. And if we approve him to move up, it shows the employees that we want to keep them here. We wanna keep them happy, and we promote from within. So I think it's a good move personally.
Discussions that I've had with some Public Works members that have come to me, they've all gave their recommendation for Dan, and have said that they'd be very happy with him in that position. So I'll take their word for it and keep it going.
Any other discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations, Dan.
Congrats, Dan.
City Engineer?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Not a lot to report as spring is arriving, but next week we do have the bid opening for the second phase of the downtown improvement project. We have scheduled a pre-con for the first phase, just a kickoff to, to identify what the contractor's schedules are, and then we do have some other projects around town that are waiting on, on decent weather, dry ground. So, um, once that happens, uh, construction will be in full swing. So with that, that's all I had to report unless you had questions for me.
Where, where do we stand with the, the water stuff?
Yeah, so, um, late last year, Council authorized the, uh, water report, and staff is actually gonna be meeting in April to review that, and I'm anticipating, pending any comments from, from city staff, we'll be bringing that to Council likely in May.
Okay. Thank you.
There any other questions for Jared? Thanks, Jared. Compost site discussion?
Okay, Mayor and Council, a draft of the possible newspaper ad for a compost site position was included in the packet for review. The city did receive some feedback regarding the hours for the compost site, and many of the marks, remarks said evening and weekend hours are ideal. One said that they would like to see at least one day during the week when the site is open during our full business day. Staff proposes keeping the same days and hours as last year, and people will start to get used to the schedule. However, the hours on Saturday were 10 to 2, but could be moved to 11 to 3 if, if Council thinks a bit later in the day would be better. Staff also recommends to see if the city can get people to apply for the $17 an hour wage. I know we had talked about it higher last time, but...
Was it the same wage as last year?
The wage last year, I believe, was 13.
I, I agree that the 11 to 3 is a better timeframe. I know that when I was out there, it was, I mean, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, that was when it was more busy than at 10. The one question I had was, is there a reason why we have it that it requires a high school diploma? My thought was just that maybe if there was like a high school student that wanted that as a part-time job, that maybe that's something that...
Are we just the age? I'm not sure. Dan, do you know why it would require a high school diploma, other than age?
I would talk to your insurance, you know, just your umbrella insurance. I don't know. I mean, they're not union members or anything. They're considered part-time, so I cannot answer that question.
I mean, if we just said 18 is kinda my thought, is then, like I said, maybe some senior in high school just wants a quick little job that, you know, pays good money and doesn't have to do a lot. Right.
Okay. Yeah, I'll check to see if that's, has to be a requirement and...
But other than that, I like the hours that we have listed.
Yeah, when we posted that question, I know it got shared around too on some different pages. I kinda went through and, uh, even, you know, asking some, some other residents as well. 48s on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturdays, they wanted a little bit longer, you know. I, I think maybe even going to 10 to 3 potentially would be best. Gives that, you know, they wanted more hours on Saturday, more hours on the weekend. So I think we should try and find at least that extra hour maybe there too, even if it's 11 to 4, 10 to 3, but I like the 3 o'clock cutoff so that whoever's working that can actually enjoy their weekend. But see what you guys think.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing a, a 10 to 3 also. Definitely something a little bit longer. I mean, granted, I'd like to have it open 24/7, but it's not the reality of the world we're living in this moment.
Okay. So if we can go without a high school diploma and just 18 plus, and then perhaps like a 10 to 3 on the weekends?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you guys wanna make a motion, like, pending that so we can advertise as soon as we kinda find out about this stuff? We wanna start in April, correct?
Yep.
Have it open?
I will make a motion to approve the posting for a seasonal position to watch the compost site pending the approval, the changes being allowed by insurance.
I will second.
Further discussion?
You guys are okay with the wage? That wage?
Yeah.
Try that? Okay.
Any discussion? Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion passes 5-0. Lawn mowing bid?
Uh, Mayor and Council, the, there is a lawn mowing bid that's included in your packet for this evening. It was increased slightly since the last time we met on February 28th. The quote, the quote was increased by 624.76 a week for the 28-week mowing season. I believe the contractor is here if you have questions for him.
I think with the increased fuel price that, I mean, we would even have to pay if we were doing the mowing, and that they look like they're going to continue increasing from here on out with predictions, you know, near $5 or more in this area. So, you know, it's an increase, but we'd have to pay it no matter what, and this is gonna, you know, save us time and...
It's still the lowest bid on all the other bids, even with the increase, so...
What was the total bid amount with the change?
Um, in the packet, it's $2,543.67 a week for mowing and weed whipping.
And how much did the bid go up per week?
Tim? I, I do have a question for you. I, I understand the increase for fuel cost. Was there some anticipatory pricing built into that for, 'cause we're about a buck past, you know, where you put your number at?
Yeah, a bit above for a little bit.
Okay. The second, second thing is by some miracle, prices come back down. Will you adjust our weekly price if the prices come back down for fuel?
Would Council be willing to increase if it exceeds that?
Well, I think you already did, right? I think you already did, uh, 'cause, you know, I, I crunched the numbers, and I think fuel prices went up X amount, and the total contract went up substantially more than just the fuel. So that's why I asked you about building a buffer in there. So I don't know where your buffer, where you built it into. I don't know what kinda number you thought should be coming at, but, um, like I said...
By a couple percent.
Couple percent? Okay.
Currently, when I submitted that date, it's gone up almost 30% since I submitted in December.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, we would have to have pretty drastic reduction in fuel costs for it to be worth our wealth to even discuss, you know, the contract. So, um, long as we're willing to work together, that's all that matters.
Of course.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Let's, let's hope we don't, but if we have another drought like we did this past summer, and you're not mowing the full 28 weeks, is that negotiable on that, or you, or is it more or less, once your mower touches the ground, that, that, that week is paid? How, how do you operate?
Yeah, if I go out that week, then I'll just hit everything that will stay consistent. I don't wanna make that call, so if you guys wanna make that call, then let me know if we do come into another drought, say, hey, skip next week, then I'm willing to work, of course.
Okay. And, and if we were to run into that issue, we don't have to pay for that week with you, or is that something that's with this contract? It's 28 weeks, and whether or not you have to mow?
If I heard one of them.
Is there any other questions? Thanks for coming up and putting your bid in too.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Tim.
Like, like I said at the last meeting, with, with all the road construction and everything we got going on, and Dan stepping in as the new Public Works Director and changes happening there, I think it's advantageous for us to, to do this. Saves us the money from having our own guys having to go out there and do that when we're gonna run into potential issues with the road construction and having them actually do what we need them to do, getting done. So I think in the long run, in my mind, I think this is the right idea. I think this is something, we're helping somebody that lives in our community, we're supporting his business, and he's helping us out, and I think it's just it's right to do, especially with everything we got going on.
Especially with the road construction.
Yeah. Couldn't agree more.
I'll make a motion to approve the lawn mowing bid for summer mowing and hire Muddy Feet Lawn Mowing Service for the summer.
I'll second.
Further discussion on the motion? Dan, just for the record, on average, how many hours a week do our guys spend out mowing when they could be doing other things if we don't have hired help?
I guess it all depends upon how fast the grass is growing.
It's the average year.
They'll probably be out a solid two days mowing, two guys, and then probably two or three days trimming. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot to mow. I mean, he's, he bid some of the parks, we're still gonna be mowing, but it's two or three days, two guys, every week if the grass is mowing, if the grass is growing that fast.
Yeah, I mean, we have close to 120 acres of mowable area, so... I was just curious.
And that's just uptown. It's a solid three days at the plant with one guy, so I, I wasn't including that.
Any further discussion? Vote yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Yes.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Cleanup Day discussion?
Uh, Mayor and Council, as you know, the city is no longer taking in money for garbage, and there's no longer going to be any money in the garbage fund, uh, so we need to talk about amnesty items. I know that's been brought up already. We also would like to talk about the location of Cleanup Day. Since we just repaved the City Hall parking lot, we don't know if we want all that heavy equipment driving in there and destroying it right away. So, um, I don't know if you have any thoughts, Dan? I know we had talked about this briefly.
I know you guys spent a lot of money repaving that parking lot. I don't think it's a wise idea for us to be, um, driving payload or a Bobcat in there and spinning around and stuff. It is a great location, it works great, but I don't wanna get yelled at when there's big divots in that new tar.
How, how long are the hours in general for Cleanup Day?
Seven to 11 or 12, and last year was a solid line for a long time.
I think we're actually open 8, 8 to noon.
Eight to noon, and, but we're here at 7 getting ready, so, yeah.
Would there be, I mean, I, I think we still need to do it, and just where could we do that? What would be a better location?
There is no great answer for that, 'cause I would like to see that the plant, but you can't really have people on 25, so I'd have to kick them over into Rock Brook. If it rains, the plant's gonna be a bad spot, 'cause it's gonna be pretty muddy down there. We've had cleanup days in the rain before, I think once or twice since I've been here. That would be something we'd really have to sit down and decide. Obviously, we'd have to post some signs at City Hall, letting everybody know that it moved to this location, but, um, there's no great answer for that. I mean, that's something that I would hope that we could talk about. I don't have the, the right answer for that. The other option would be regional, if you use that parking lot out there, but then that's a kind of a dead end, that's gonna be a pain in the butt to turn around in there. The parking lot to the north of the ball field, we can make a U in there, but that'll be a little tight.
What if we used the road around the ball field and had a drop-off near Carver Field, and then they could drive in and drive right out?
Yeah, I mean, there's always, where there's a will, there's a way, if that's what you wanna do. I mean, we could set the dumpsters on the side of the road and like drive them in one way and out the other. You know, come in from First Street and kick out to Emerson.
I think that would help with traffic flow in general, doing it at a location like that, or driving through a regional park if that was possible, but I know it'll get muddy if it's wet, so...
Yeah, very. So, I mean, that's, that's a possible way to do it. I would also like to see, and this is something I wanted to run across, you guys and us Public Works guys have talked about this, maybe getting ahold of the trailer park and letting them come early, so they don't hold up our line. They usually bring two giant trailers full, and our line gets pretty backed up. We could get, we get dumpsters at the plant early in the week, and we pick up like the stuff that was left over from last year and stuff that we find around town, we gotta pile at the plant, to let the trailer park come in early, like Friday or Thursday, or maybe even Sun, well, not Sunday, but, so they're not coming to Cleanup Day with their gigantic trailers full of stuff. It'd be another, 'cause they really back us up. Just another thought that I wanted to run by you guys. That's something I'd have to call the, the manager down there and let him know.
What, uh, what are we thinking for, how, how much did it cost for two free items for everybody the last couple of years? Or just in a general year?
I, I would have to look that up. I, I don't know that we track that specifically, um, because when we did our reporting, we always had to leave that portion out. It's quite a bit. I mean, the city would have to pay the contractors for each item collected. Depends on how many people do that, um, depends what the items are. I mean, it really just depends. I mean, if it's all like mattresses, that's spendy.
Is there any other discussion on this?
I, I know I would like to, to see the two items back. I mean, even if we come to an agreement on one item, I mean, something for the, for the community on this. It's a big day for them, you know, and talking to, to my neighbors, what they're used to and, and what they'd like to... It's a big day for them, you know, and talking to, to my neighbors, what they're used to and, and what they'd like to see. Most of them only have two items, so it's, they like it, they enjoy it. So, but that's, you know, up for discussion, but I think that, and, you know, looking at where we could hold it. I mean, it's probably a long shot, but is there any chance we could use the elementary school parking lot?
That road's pretty rough.
We just have to be careful, like, we're not sure when construction's starting and where it's going to be starting, so, yeah. And that school road needs to get redone.
I would like to as well continue to see the two free items. And then, of course, you pay for pickup. And my question would be is, can we use what is left in the garbage fund to pay for that this year? And then if there's any left, that gets moved?
Yeah, I mean, we can, I know we had kind of earmarked that money to buy a plow truck, which we also really need. So the more you drain it, the more money we have to come up with otherwise for that. So we, Michael?
Yes.
What do you think?
I don't know what the two items has cost in previous years with.
Yeah, it just depends on the item.
But we've only just started to build up a budget for the next plow truck and additional vehicles for Public Works replacements.
Is this something maybe we could reach out to Randy's on? I mean, we've been working with them here recently and maybe they can give us a little, a bit of a break on some things.
We made a nice little concession for him. I think it'd be nice to bring him back and see if they'll make a little concession for the city.
What kind of concession are you looking for? Like a discount or?
Yeah, a discount, I mean, I don't know. At least reach out to him and say, hey, this is what we got going on, I mean.
Well, we'll reach out to them and get their rates for this year and see if there's anything they can do for us in that way. And then, Michael, can we leave the money then for another whole year?
It can stay there until we transfer. I mean, it's all in, it's just parsed out by funds, but it's all in the same, it's not moving anywhere.
I mean, that'll be up to you guys.
Wherever Council sees fit.
I, I just think that if that money's already there in that fund, then if we use that, we're going to pay for a new plow truck anyway. It, it just may get, you know, from a different, from the general fund anyway. So if we're paying for two free items or one free item or whatever we decide, I think that it's money that's coming out of the budget one way or the other. And if we have this, to just use as much as possible before transferring it.
Yeah, that'll be up to you guys.
What are we thinking for items?
Well, if you're going to keep the money in the garbage fund. Certainly offer two items again.
I think we just keep it as what people know, two items.
With pickup? Yeah, and then to sign up for pickup and that, that will just be the same as in years past, like five dollars per item to pick up.
You're going to be dealing with this again next year, you know?
Yeah, this will be kind of a revolving door. I mean, because once we do close that garbage fund, there just won't be any money in there. And then any money we do spend on cleanup day will just be our money, you know?
Right.
From elsewhere.
I think at that point, we could probably get numbers from Randy's, too, to see what it's cost the last couple of years and just a rough estimate of what the budget for it, if we were to keep doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I can look and see what our, like, Randy's bills have been for the last few years and for the other couple contractors that come in. And kind of just see how much per year we'd have to budget out for that.
Do we have a date for cleanup?
May fourteenth.
Fourteenth, eight to twelve. Any more discussion on that?
Are you guys okay with Public Works getting together and deciding a spot? Or you want me to stay out of the City Hall parking lot, correct?
Preferably.
Between Public Works and, you know, maybe Emergency Management will have an input on that, too, so it doesn't maybe block the fire department either, but yes. And then we'll have to post it there and here and online.
Okay.
City property garage and house demolition discussion.
There was a meeting on March eighth that some staff attended with Bolton and Make. The city acquired the Rolson property. The one thing that they need down fairly quickly for the project starts is definitely the garage for sure. They asked Public Works to look into it and I did. I got some numbers. A forty-yard dumpster through Randy's is six hundred and sixty-five dollars. That's for seven ton. The concrete has to go into a separate dumpster, so that would be double that. And then our man hours and stuff, obviously our payloader and stuff, diesel. I end up talking to Ward Carlson and he gave me a bid of fifteen hundred dollars and he'll take the garage, the concrete, everything gone out. That's just the garage. He'll do it fairly quick. So I just want some direction there, what you guys would like to see. My personal opinion on it, Public Works doing it, I think you're well over the fifteen hundred dollars. It's just cheaper to have Ward come in and do it. And I had him come and look at it and he also was interested in the house. So this is something a little more interesting. He, he knows a guy, and I talked to this gentleman today, his name is Eric, he's from Marcus Movers. He's interested in the house possibly to move the house off the basement and he'll do it for nothing. He'll take the house. Then we would turn around and have Ward bid the basement demolishing, so. But he is not around for two weeks. He wants to come back and look at the inside of the house. He just went on vacation this afternoon. So I would like, um, your guys is okay to have him come back and kind of look at that, too, so.
I think if somebody wants to take the house for free, it's good, but.
What's the catch?
What's the catch?
Yeah, it's a lot of work for free.
Not, not with price lumber these days.
Yeah, I suppose, good point.
Ward has done other projects in other towns, that's why I kind of got his name. But Ward, Ward knows this guy Eric from Marcus Movers and they, he says he's, does it fairly efficient. Now, I'm not saying nothing would, could happen, but it's the cheapest way the city could get to get rid of that house. I, I personally believe, but that's not saying the guy wants it yet either, so.
Do we run into a legal issue by not going out for more than one bid?
Mr. Mayor, it depends on the value of the work. And if that's over a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, then you would run into an issue or if there's something in the purchasing, or the, sorry, the, I guess, the purchasing policy in the city that would require something like that. But I can follow up pretty quickly to coordinate all of this.
As long, so as long as we stay under that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we won't run into an issue?
That's right. There, I, I'm trying to just think through if it's donate, if you're, if it's, you're switching from the cost of having to demo the house to the value of the home that you're essentially donating as surplus. I just have to sort of research on, on that. I've not heard of a situation like that. It seems like a unique and interesting opportunity. So, but, so that's the sort of main threshold you have to watch out for and we just have to figure out what the numbers look like.
So for the garage, we'd be okay with the fifteen hundred dollar bid?
I believe so. Yeah, I mean, for the garage, I mean, that's.
Yeah, you guys can approve that if you want.
Him taking the cement also, he takes it all, all of it will be gone. Now, if the cement is thick to the point where we can't drop it with the payload bucket, I also priced a jackhammer rental for the Bobcat, that was four hundred dollars for one day. So fifteen hundred dollars, I mean, you're, you're over that and dumpsters for sure and wages, so. I say give him a shot and then he'll probably be more likely to get rid of the basement, too, for you. So obviously he'll bid that at that time, but.
Now, when it comes to the, the actual house, I know that the fire department has been using it as a training facility right now. When, when would he want to come in and take the house?
He said as soon as he gets back from vacation two weeks, he had me call, I called Kevin today. He's like, please tell the fire department not to knock any holes in the walls for two weeks. So you guys could continue your training in there, just don't demolish anything yet.
After two weeks, no guarantees.
I was just going to ask you, Kevin.
Hold him, make sure he's in, as soon as he gets back from vacation to call me and he wants to go inside. Apparently he came and looked at the outside of it this weekend, so he was fairly interested in it. But he went to warmer weather as of three o'clock this afternoon for two weeks, so.
What, it's going to be forties this week, what's warmer? That's a heat wave.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollar demolition? I'll make a motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollar demolition of the garage.
Oh, second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero. Was there any other discussion in regards to the garage and house demolition?
Not that I know of.
Okay, old business, Lions Club gambling license discussion. I understand the Lions is here and would like to say a few words.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I am the president, president of the Lions Club and that's pretty much all you know, let you get people know our Lions has, its club license has been suspended, not taken away. It's suspended for six months due to our previous gambling manager of having sticky figures. Did you already get a copy of this?
Yes, we did.
Yep, it's in the packet.
We do, we've been in the business for probably, I believe, forty-two years that we've been gambling. And we would like to just say that we want to get back in there in another six months and we don't want to lose our spot. I've been a Lion member, I'm the original charter member, one of us, two of us. So I guess all we are is pleading for, you know, to let us get back in there in six months. All we can do.
Changing the ordinance to allow an outside organization to come in, isn't us telling you that you guys aren't valuable or that what you do for the community isn't valuable? It's just, we're talking about changing the ordinance so that we can help those businesses, too, because six months for you guys without gambling is huge for you. But it's huge for the two bars in town as well that, that use, you know, the, the gambling license for their pull tabs. So, and I don't want to see you guys, you know, be, you know, kicked out of those places after that six months is done either, but I also don't want to see those bars go without a huge portion of their income for six months. That's kind of where I stand, not that, you know, not, not attacking the Lions and I think the, the letters of recommendation are great.
Yes, we, we do a lot, I mean, there's so much we do. Now, in case you let somebody in there after six months, can we get back in?
Now, that, that's where we can't tell the bar owners who to go with. And we're not going to stop them as long as it's a legal gambling license that you hold. That's up to the bar owner decision. That's, that's not for us to say and I, I won't get involved in that. If they want to bring you back, by all means, bring you back.
So I don't know, what do you think, what should be, it was, I mean, we'd certainly like to get back in.
I, I know that in my talkings with Brian, and I don't see a Brian here right now. Oh, is he? I know, oh, there you are, you're hiding back there. When I've talked to Brian about this, that he said that he's willing to bring you guys back after six months, but I know that the big thing that everyone's going to want after six months is ETabs. So that is a thought, too, to have.
We were in the process of getting them in there until.
All of this?
Yeah. So, you know.
And I, I want you to know, nobody up here blames you guys for what happened. You know, there's bad seeds and everything and it's an unfortunate situation. I'm really sorry that it happened to you guys because what you guys do for the community is beyond measurable, you know? And, and we want, we want to be able to see you guys succeed, you know, and, and make sure that you guys are, are successful and, and giving back and, and doing what you guys do. That, not, nobody up here wants to see you guys. You know, as, as somebody who, who works in the, you know, kind of the, the business that Brian is in and Sue, you know, the last two, two years have been, have been miserable. You know, and, yeah, I just, I don't want to have another, another setback for our two bars in town to have to deal with. And, and it's not a punishment to you at all, I don't want you to take it that way. By any means. We just don't want to see them get hurt by this and maybe, maybe that affects them so much that they're not around. I mean, it's, it's a fragile economy for, for all bars and restaurants right now. We don't want to make su, we want to make sure that they're still around and, and in the community and I hope you guys understand that. And, you know, at the end of the day, the discussion six months from now, that's for you guys to talk to Brian and Sue with and, and make that decision if you guys have a license back, which I'm pretty sure you will.
Well, I said, we did lose our license.
No, no, but it, once the suspension's up, I mean, yeah, absolutely, by all means. No, nobody appears going to stop that.
Yeah, and I totally agree with David. I mean, it's, it's not a punishment. They came to us looking for, you know, some help, you know? And it's, like he said, I mean, it's, it's a horrible situation. And, you know, we're just doing what we can to help out the, you know, the two bars that are in here. You know, and it's, again, it's not a, it's not a punishment by any means, it's just, you know, we'd like to, like he said, see them thrive.
Well, all right then, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I comment one more thing?
Absolutely.
I worked with that young man for over ten years, though he's a good kid.
I do want to say one, like, again, thank you for everything you guys do. Honestly, it means a lot to this community and, and it's, it doesn't go unnoticed, I want you guys all to know that. It, it's unfortunate situation. And I, nobody looks down on, on you guys at all as individuals or as an organization. And, you know, thank you for, for going through, I, you know, I, what I heard is you guys figured it out and took care of it. And unfortunately, you guys could get slapped with it, but.
Yeah, we, we got, we got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lawful gambling ordinance amendment.
Mayor and Council, this is the completed ordinance amendment that we've been working on since the February fourteenth meeting. The ordinance amendment removes any restrictions on which organizations are allowed to conduct gambling within the city. And, and then therefore will be up to the business owners and city council moving forward. Do you guys have any questions or anything? I know we've been kind of working on this for a couple of weeks, a few weeks now.
Yes, thank you for all your work on this, I know it was a lot, just.
Joe, if you have any comments about it?
You know, the, the main goal with this was to just simplify the ordinance and make it clear, provide additional criteria that everybody can see in the code. So when, you know, you want to apply for a premise permit, you see basically everything you need in one spot.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh-three.
I'll second. Further discussion on the motion or the ordinance? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes, Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash one-three, just the authorizing the summary publication of the ordinance. So I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty- So I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash one-three.
Second.
Further discussion? I'll vote yes, Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the resolution to approve a charitable gambling license for the Delano Area Youth Hockey Association.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve resolution twenty-two-two dash fourteen.
I will second. Further discussion?
What's, what's the actual, you know, timeline of events they have to go through with the state? And is this the last step or what's, what's?
Um, well, I have their applications here this evening, and so we sign it and put the resolution number on them, and then they do all the work from there, send it to the state and, and get, they get their license going, so.
Do we have, do we have a time, timeline and all of when that would be approved by the state so that we know?
License thing with the state happens at the first of March, so. April first.
Hopefully back in a second.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Was there any other, um, organizations with gambling licenses that showed interest in coming into town?
Not that I've been contacted by.
I think especially for our two bars' sakes, that this is something that we should do to help keep them all open and keep the lights on, I know it's a huge part of both their incomes.
Yeah, I agree.
Any further discussion? I'll vote yes, Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. New business. Easter egg hunt.
Easter egg hunt. All right. I believe we have, if you guys want to go with that many, I think we have like five thousand eggs. I don't know how many kids you're expecting, um, I know in the past there's probably been a two, three hundred kids, um, at the event. I don't know how many eggs you guys want to do, all five thousand of them. I'm up to you guys. I think we have that many ready to go, so. How many? About five thousand. Yeah.
Not exactly ready to go, they're.
Well, they're ready to be stuffed, yeah. Just have to go get some candy, um, I was gonna do that tomorrow, usually spend anywhere from three to five hundred dollars on candy.
And we said about two, two to three hundred kids in attendance typically?
Then you'd have to think a handful of eggs per kid.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the one thing I had thought about is that possibly we could do, um, like give out donuts and juice or coffee to kids and adults that were to come. Uh, I did talk to someone from the state and they said that, um, if it's anything that's not just prepackaged, and I've never heard of prepackaged coffee, that just comes in a cup that.
Need a license.
Yeah, but yeah, they, we would need a license for all of that.
Yep.
And it would be, they said the cheapest license is like fifty dollars. Um, so that was just a thought that I had is that m- maybe parents and kids would, you know, enjoy it and like it a little more, just put out some juice and coffee and donuts for them.
So are you saying you want to get a food license?
I would, I mean.
Can we get that in the shorter time? I mean, we have got it like a month.
Usually doesn't take very long when I've applied for food license.
Okay.
Last one that I just did, it took a ball eight weeks to get.
Really?
We started back.
The one that we got, I think it only took a few weeks.
For the special event license?
I guess it just matters, it's, you don't really know.
It was just a thought, if we can't get the license, then it is what it is and we stuff the five thousand eggs and.
Juice boxes or something like that.
I think if we don't get the license, we go juice box route and.
And prepackaged donuts or something, yeah, okay. But yes, that's.
How many eggs do we want to do?
Five thousand.
That's a thousand apiece.
That's a lot of eggs.
Well, Nicole said she'd do four thousand, so.
I do, I'll have help. I thought you said your daughter was really excited.
Will they be a superstar for help?
I mean, if we're talking a handful of eggs for each kid.
I just need to know how much candy to kind of buy.
Yeah, I mean.
We're doing all five thousand, obviously it'll be a lot more, so.
I, I would say at most twenty-five hundred eggs.
Yeah.
At most, because let's just say we get five hundred kids, that's still five eggs for each kid.
And that's plenty.
That, I think that's plenty. You know, I don't, uh, and that, and that also saves us to have it, you know, have some extra for next year.
Sure.
How many, do you, do you remember how many eggs were last year were done, or not last year, two years ago?
I don't think we did it two years ago, and last year it was a drive-through, um, there weren't very many cars, like, we ordered prepackaged eggs, I can't remember how many there were, there were not very many.
I, I personally, I'd like to be on the safe side and, and go with five thousand. I mean, if that means I need to take home some more and stuff them, then that's fine, I'll, I just, I personally think that just that's being on the safe side of, of having enough.
And then for candy, like, because they've got like the mini ones or like the fun size ones.
I think the mini ones are the ones that fit in there, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get, because those are.
What's the date of Easter egg hunt?
Sixteen.
The ninth. Saturday before, the week of the Saturday before.
Yeah, the ninth.
We're gonna leave it all to Kirby.
Got twelve kids at work, I'll just put them to it.
There you go. So five thousand, that's what we're going with?
I'll get candy for five thousand.
Do you, uh?
It's a lot of eggs.
It's a lot of eggs.
It's a lot of eggs.
It sounds like a lot, but it, I mean, it goes fast.
It sounds like a lot because it is a lot.
It, it goes fast, it's, um.
If you want to look at the food license thing, I can ask the relief association, if you guys can use ours. Uh, I would just have to contact our rep to get it added, but I know that there'll at least be one member there guessing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Association, probably two. Um, so it's no additional cost or anything, but it's just a plan ahead.
Yeah, if you could look into that, that'd be good. Please do.
Yes, please do that.
So I, I would say if that goes into effect, or if we get a license, we have coffee, donuts, juice going, that's a lot of, it's a lot of.
Three thousand eggs.
That's a lot of sugar right there. On top of the five thousand eggs, I think we can knock the eggs back.
Kids aren't gonna sleep for three days.
They're not my kids.
Not mine either.
I mean, i- i- if they bring, if a kid brings their basket, I mean, you gotta imagine that they can.
They're gonna want eggs in their basket.
They're, they're gonna want to fill their basket, and that's ten, twelve, you know, eggs per kid, so.
So if you got three hundred kids, that's three thousand eggs.
Thirty-six hundred eggs.
That's what I heard, right?
Roughly.
I think the, I just think the safe amount would still be five thousand, and if there's leftover, then we've got candy for people to come and visit City Hall.
Okay.
A lot of people.
Um, I think I have spending authority enough to get the, the candy, so that should be fine, and then we'll have to talk about how the logistics of the coffee and donuts and such are gonna work at that time.
And all five thousand eggs will be stuffed by Kirby.
Yeah.
I will, I will second that.
Christie, did you ever hear back from that, uh?
She didn't let me know tomorrow.
Okay.
She just got back to town, she can let me know morning.
So Christie had reached out to a food truck about coming up there, so, um, no details on that yet. Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Five thousand.
Excel Energy Mobile Substation Site Lease Contract.
Okay. Um, I spoke with the engineers and Mr. McCormick when I first got an email from Excel about this, um, and Wayne had said that Excel has used our land before to temp, to set up temporary substations, and it's just no different. The city attorney's drafted up an agreement that Excel has agreed to the terms of, and has agreed to all terms stipulated by the engineers as well. Excel will pay the city twenty-five hundred dollars to lease the property near the wastewater treatment plant from August first to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
And what would the amount be that the city gets?
Twenty-five hundred.
Just wanted to make sure it was out there.
They'll pay for your candy.
There you go. So in the packet is both a contract that will need to be approved, as well as the resolution approving the contract.
So why, why are they doing this again?
Um.
They know.
They are doing a project and they need another substation there.
Okay.
Basically.
What it blows down to?
Yeah.
Well, it's unused land, so if the city can get something out of it instead of having to maintain it for that amount of time, then.
Yep, and they'll restore it and repair any environmental or any other damage that they do, so.
Well, I'll make a motion if we go ahead and approve the, uh, site lease contract for Excel.
I will second. Further discussion? Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero.
I'll also make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-two dash fifteen for the mobile, uh, substation site lease.
I will second.
Further discussion on the motion? I'll vote yes, Mr. Marslick.
Yes.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Forest Creek Walking Trail Repair Discussion?
Um, I know we had talked about this, uh, was it like a year ago with Wayne?
Yeah, before the park went in.
Yeah, and I know we were gonna talk about getting some quotes to, um, fix the trail, so we wanted to bring that up again, um. I'm wondering, Jared, is that something they can do as part of the road project, or would we hire somebody else to do that? To fix some of the trails that are bad?
I think we could certainly contact the contractor that'll be doing the road project and ask for a quote.
Okay.
I don't honestly know if they'll be interested, but it's certainly a question we could ask, otherwise, uh, we could solicit other quotes from contractors for that work.
Okay.
Get two or ask for three, hopefully get two, so.
Let's, let's work on that and see what, see what kind of numbers we're talking.
Yeah, it's definitely gotten worse.
Yeah. Well, it wasn't great last year.
No, it definitely wasn't.
And then winter and.
Winter and then.
Makes it worse, too.
All the heavy equipment that was driving on it for the park and.
So we'll get quotes for the Forest Creek Walking Trail and then go from there.
Yep.
May meeting date discussion?
So, um, the city administrator and the city clerk treasurer will be attending a week-long institute training in St. Cloud the week of May ninth through thirteenth, which is when both the regular council meeting and the planning and zoning meetings fall in May. Uh, staff attendance at the training is required and attendance is taken at the beginning and end of each class, uh, which would make it nearly impossible to get back in time to, to set up and attend the meetings. I spoke with the League of Minnesota Cities about this, and they said that we have two options. Um, our first option would be to cancel the regular, um, regularly scheduled council meeting and reschedule as a special meeting for the following week. Um, or to the council, you guys would meet here on a regularly scheduled day in May, and then, um, as long as there was a quorum, you could make a motion to recess and reconvene at the new meeting time. Um, I think it's easier to just cancel and post for a special meeting if you guys are okay with the date change. I know it's not a usual thing, but, um, so it would be pushed to the sixteenth for the May council meeting and the eighteenth for planning and zoning.
Not having the city clerk treasurer or the city administrator here would be.
It would be tough, yeah, and I.
Tough.
Yeah, wouldn't want to put that on other staff either, so.
No, there is five Mondays in May, I suppose the thirtieth is.
Memorial Day, yeah, I've looked at that as well.
Okay.
I do, I do struggle with the idea of moving it in general and.
Well, I think getting it, talking about it now allows us, I can post it like in the paper, I can put it in Montrose News, um, we can post around town, we can post it on the sign at the bank, I mean, there's lots of other ways we can inform people because it, it isn't, um, normal to cancel the city council meetings or reschedule them. I just don't know that we could get back here for that.
Well, that would affect planning zoning, yeah, you said that, sorry.
I don't see a problem with moving it to the next week.
I mean, if there's nobody that could take your place, I could understand doing it, I just.
Well, it either has to be me or the city clerk.
Yeah.
You're both gonna be there.
And we'll both be there.
We'll both be gone.
Yeah.
Do we have to go to the third week or could we go to the first week? I'm just curious.
We, we could move it up to the second.
I just, just ask and throw in the idea out there.
Yeah.
So.
I just thought giving it an extra week instead of one less week would be better, but yeah, if you want to move it to that first week, that's fine.
I was just creating discussion, that's. Without you or Michael here, um, you know, I, we will have to cancel and reschedule a special meeting, so.
Yeah.
Do we need to decide what day to do it?
No, you don't need a motion, um, but you can always, no, you don't, you do not, but to be safe, you, you can.
Okay. Make a motion then.
Do we need to decide what day?
Yeah, let's, um, decide what date and then I can start, uh, advertising that.
I'm going with the sixteenth. Yeah, I am too. I've got a conflict on the second anyway, I'm on a little ribbon.
Sorry.
Sixteenth work for you?
Sixteenth works for me.
Either day I, there's a conflict, but I can make the sixteenth work.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to cancel the May ninth meeting and have a special council meeting on May sixteenth at seven P M at the Montrose Community Center.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise.
Aye.
Ms. Andrioff.
Aye.
Mr. Solars.
Aye.
Mr. Marslick.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Um, letter E, which we'd moved off the, well, I moved off the consent agenda as the garbage fund resolution.
And if you guys want to keep it where it is, I would say that that resolution is no longer valid.
Valid. Do we want to keep that to use for the cleanup day, or do we want to transfer it to the? Just because i- i- if there's any unused money in the budget, just for people that aren't aware, it gets moved from the specific spot that it's in to the general fund. So this money, if it wasn't used for this, it would be moved to the general fund that gets used for general purposes in, within the city.
And Michael, you were saying after cleanup day, we could move it potentially to the general fund afterwards?
You could still move it at a later date. Currently, what is budgeted already is the whole trash fund, refuse fund has been budgeted to zero, it's been cleared out. Um, a small portion for cleanup, for running cleanup day was moved to, I believe, under the parks fund. A line item was set up in there, so alternately you can move whatever we estimate the cost to be to that fund, and we would just have to have a budget resolution for those items, because currently it's budgeted as is and zeroing out the trash fund and moving the remainder to capital improvement.
And how much total was in that fund prior?
It, what is left in the trash fund?
Yeah.
Roughly two hundred and twenty-four thousand.
So, okay, so the two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars has been sitting in the, in the garbage fund this entire time?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did tap in that last year for cleanup day, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Just wanted to make sure.
I'd sure like to know how much money we're talking about before we vote on this.
About the cleanup's going to cost?
Mm-hmm. Because we are setting precedent here.
Yeah.
So maybe we need to table this for now until our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd like to see what we've paid Randys in the past, and then at least contact them and see if there's, hey, you, we scratched your back, you know, maybe scratch ours a little bit here.
So table resolution 2022-11.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, open forum. Michelle Otto?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Michelle Otto, 205, Cleveland, North. And I'm just, it's a simple request, you guys have the open forum at the end of the meeting, asking that you put it back at the top of the meeting, because basically now when we get here, all of your decisions have been made, so what is kind of the point of having open forum at the end, when we have discussion, you know, with everything that you guys have already gone through? You're not really taking the input of what are you guys here, because you've already made all of your decisions. So I'm asking you to put it back at the beginning, and then just a little discussion on your Easter egg hunt. 5,000 eggs is kind of necessary, so I don't know if any of you have, Kirby, I know you've brought your kids here before.
Brought mine.
Yeah.
I've been here.
Usually you keep little kids in here, and then you have two sections out in the park that way you can already block them off certain age groups, so you know, it's nice to have, it's like a 20-minute. So I don't know, you know, are you going to have a bunny, are you going to have pictures, and then you know, or just a stick and a Easter egg?
Just a simple Easter egg hunt, I believe.
But there was some discussion about a bunny.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of work to do.
Right.
Before the decision's made, so. And I also want to say just a little bit on the decision for changing the gambling fund, and I understand why you did it, it's just disheartening that, you know, you guys know that this is coming, that we're not, the Lions sadly won't get back in, you know, as Japanese, they're going to lose it, and it's going to be sad, because the Lions have contributed a ton of money and time to the city. And you guys just kind of let go. I mean, it's not, I'm not going to blame you because it's not on you guys, but you should have thought about, you know, how, how much they actually affect what goes on here. Simple request, just put open forum back so that we can make decisions, us as residents can give input.
Thank you. Uh, upcoming meetings. No Park and Rec meeting, still looking for more members. We have four that have applied. City council meeting April 11th, planning and zoning April 13th. EDA tomorrow's was canceled, and instead is April 19th.
Do we, sorry, do we want to put a hard end date on the applications for Park and Rec? I mean, how much longer are we going to? Keep going, waiting for that fifth?
And approve four? Over.
I don't know, I mean, I would really love to see a fifth, and I mean, I think that's kind of what we all want, but.
I know three other applications have been picked up, they just weren't turned in.
Okay.
And how many, how many do we have turned in?
Four. I don't know, it was just a thought. I know that there's other applications out there, what can we do to push them to fill it out and get it in here?
I could see putting a, a date on it, and then, and then what do we do after the date? That's the question.
Right.
Approve four?
You have to change, uh, do bylaws, yep. But we could pare it back down to three or four people required and get it going again. I think with developments and different things, we could use Park and Rec.
Yep.
Yep.
Not only say do before the next meeting.
What?
Gives them.
Do before the next meeting?
The application's due.
Application.
Oh, due before the next meeting.
And put it on the next agenda?
Yeah. I think it's time.
Yep. I agree.
All right. Acknowledgements. I want to thank Wayne for his 16, 17 years that he was. Working for the city of Montrose, and for Danny wanting to step up, take that role. And I'm glad that you want to move up and do that, so I think you'll do good at it. I also want to thank the Montrose Days Celebration Committee for doing their fish fry, and for the council for helping out with that, too. So you guys helped out a lot.
It's a nice balmy 9 degrees outside.
I froze.
My hands are still frozen.
And then also Lieutenant Wurkula for coming at the end of February and giving us just the rundown of all of the statistics on crime and comparisons to neighboring cities. So if you didn't see that, check out the special council meeting end of February when he talks about it. And then we've also been putting flyers out in case anyone's interested, we're looking for a city council liaison, a student liaison. So I have delivered flyers to Delano, Buffalo, Montrose Elementary, Howard Lake Middle School, Elementary, High School. So all the schools in the area, other than Watertown, have been given a flyer, and hopefully we get a student liaison that's interested, so. Any other acknowledgements?
I, I'd like to acknowledge the Montrose Lions for coming out and understanding, thank you for everything, and hopefully again, after the six months, we're back up and running.
No further acknowledgements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, I'll second that. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mr. Marslick?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Ms. Andrioff?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, we're adjourned.
How would you, how would you break a tie in a four-person Park and Rec? Well, if the public's not interested enough to move forward with that, why the hell would we?